Welcome to this week's edition of the Bailo Report. I'm Jade Bailo. Last week, we had report to the people with the Chair of the Olmsted County Board, the President of the City Council, and the President of the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce. We talked about collaboration and interim cities, and it was a very good meeting. Well, this week, we have a first-term councilman who is a former employee of the city of Rochester. I said he's a marathoner. We said that in the paper. They had council meeting last night, and this is being recorded for tonight's program. We're going to ask him about his reaction after a whole year, I think, of working with this city government. He is our fifth ward, Fifth Ward.
Correct.
And Sean Palmer. We welcome you.
Well, thank you for having me.
Welcome you back.
Yes, I enjoy it being here.
First, a non-political question. Marathons. How long have you been running marathons?
Well, I'm 60, and I ran my first marathon when I was 50. And I've run 42 since then. I've run eight Boston marathons. I've qualified for 10. So I just finished up Jacksonville on Sunday, and I ran a 339-12. So that was a pretty good run for me. Forty degrees in the weather was.
Last time we talked, we talked about Soldiers Field and the track.
Yes.
Are you happy with how that ended up?
Excellent, yes. It was a lot of community engagement, a lot of hard work from a lot of different people. But that track has been there for 91 years. It was a gift from the Legion and for the children and the families of Olmsted County. And we're going to have a great surface on it. We're finally going to maintain it, and I'm very excited about that.
Good, good. Because I didn't realize that you were doing the big marathons, and you are. So, 60. All right. Question. After we had our first interview, you were optimistic about the city council and eager to get going, and it's been about a year. So what do you think now?
It's been a year as of today. Our inauguration was. And it's exactly what I thought it is. It's such a great honor and privilege to serve the ward, the neighbors, and talk to the neighbors. I'm fortunate, I'm out in the community. I have a part-time job at the Dan Abrams, so I get to see a lot of people, and they tell me, "I'm either doing a really good job," or "Have I thought of this?" Or they say, "Yeah, that wasn't very smart." But it's been fun. It's everything I thought it was going to be. It's been exciting. I work with some good people on the council.
And what has been the biggest challenge for you?
Well, I think to realize that we own a sewer plant, that we have a bus line, that we have an airport. Those are three big items that Minneapolis and St. Paul don't have. Met Council does that for them, and the MAC does that. So I think just the broad information that we have. Last year, you know, we hit with a lot of snow, and the snow ordinance was something that we installed. It's funny, because in February and March, we got complaints that we didn't have it. So then we put the ordinance in in October and November. People complained that we did have an ordinance. So you heard the good and the bad all in the same issue.
Are you still standing by the parking on alternate sides from November until May?
Yes. And we're trying to see how that goes this year. I've been very enthusiastic about the outcome of that. You drive down the road, and a lot of cars are off the road. It makes it faster for our Public Works to get them clean. It also makes it faster for them to plow all the snow. That gives us the opportunity in the spring and the fall to get the leaves off, get the sand off the road, to be able to trim some trees. It's been very good. There have been some rough spots. And Public Works has been very good at, you know, exceptions and making rules and helping out with that. We did a very good job of public engagement and got out there in front of people and let them know that this ordinance was coming. We did some warning tickets, and then we started ticketing people.
Good. Speaking of infrastructure, what are the biggest problems facing this city at the age of this city, when you consider the utilities, especially the sewer pipes? What are our biggest infrastructure issues? Are they roads or what?
Parking is the number-one issue, and finding parking for the employees and the people downtown. But it's funny, you read in the newspaper from 50 years ago, 1950s, more than 50 years ago now, in 1950s, that parking was the biggest problem in downtown Rochester. One of the reasons downtown Dayton's left downtown was for parking.
And parking is still a big issue. And I understand the council meeting ran until midnight last night?
We were there till about 12:45 yesterday. And one of the big issues, of course, was the Kmart parking lot. And we listened to the citizens in that ward and the developer. And it was kind of a neat experience to listen to what the developer had to say and his plan. It's not going to be a parking lot for long, maybe five to 10 years. And that's not a long period of time if you think about history. But that's an area that's ripe for development. There's a lease that he bought out from the bankruptcy from Kmart that was 18 more years. That building could have sat empty for 18 more years. And I don't know if you remember, but the North Kmart that went out of business in the 80s, when they left, what the parking lot looked like, what that building looked like. And I don't think in the gateway to Rochester that's what we want for our gateway.
And they spent a lot of money on that parking lot?
Yes.
Lighting and striping it and getting it set for a parking lot?
Yeah. And parking is a big issue for Rochester and the employees. That parking lot is going to be set up as a public parking lot for as many public spots as we need. Won't be a lot of them. About 5% of non-male employees park in our parking areas. But Mayo Clinic will maintain that, and the city of Rochester will lease it and lease it back to them.
Now, when it was voted last night, it was voted down four to three?
That's correct.
So what's next?
Well, we voted it down the first time, then we tabled it. And so that we can look at it and come up with some... There's some language that a couple of council people didn't like, the fact that long-range parking for Rochester residents were going to be a yearly contract. We looked to see if we can put some meters in there and some signage difficulties. But I think in the long run, people will see this as a benefit for Rochester.
Now, you have an interesting thought about a plan to use the park and rides, but not quite as disjointed as having a separate parking lot for the bus, and then it takes a circulator to go around. Tell us, tell our viewers about that.
Well, the thought process that I had was that First Avenue southeast stops at Ninth Street. And heading north, if we ran it through the Kmart parking lot area in front of Ampee, and then through the Folerton Lot, we could hit Fourth Street southeast and take a left on the bus, make it more of a bus rapid transit. Then that would collide with when we go up to the Graham Park area or Libby's, whatever the county decides they want to do up there. We could run it down First Avenue and not have to take up a lane and traffic on Broadway End or Third Avenue.
So what has been the reception of that idea?
I think people are open to that idea. It's... When it's not their idea, sometimes they're not that open about it. But they kind of scratch their head and say, "That's a good idea, and it would work, and we could make that work." And I think in the long run, you're going to see a solution like that.
Who has to decide whether or not they even do that?
The city council is the ones that are responsible for anything. You know, the DMC, it comes to the city council. We're the final say, and that was how it was set up, is that the city council has that authority.
Yeah. So before the next vote, which will be at the next council meeting on the parking, you could have this as one of the options?
We could, but probably not in the next one, because the building is not included in this one. They're doing it in two phases. The first phase is the lot that's done, that wasn't an existing parking lot. And then their plan is to tear that building down. He would not give us a guarantee that it's going to be torn down. But if we can work out something that we can tear that building down and put more parking in there... It's a great developer. I don't know how many people know, but they've done some development in Hastings. I'm going to go up to Hastings and look at what they've done. And he has a great plan for the whole thing. He's not just build it and run. He's here in Rochester, and has been for a long time.
We had the commander, the Salvation Army here, and I said, "You know, how did this happen?" So goes to Christmas, that they lost their lease, or they didn't get a renewal. And he said how much money they have lost in paying leases. And he said, "We have a committee looking at whether we should even be in that business." But it just couldn't be worse for all the people who had stuff to take to their for the holiday season. All right. So there's a plan for that building too?
Yeah, that building will be coming down, in all likelihood.
Yeah.
I don't own it, so I can't tell you it will.
Okay. Let's talk about salaries, because this has gotten the most ink, I think, and the most TV coverage and public discussion, if you will. What do you think?
It's been interesting. The first time it came up, it came up in the middle of the night at the end of an agenda. It wasn't on the agenda. I voted against it. The second time it came up, I voted for it, because it was going to be an unanimous vote, and it turned out not to be. And so I announced that I wasn't going to support it. And I don't support it for a couple of reasons. And the first reason is it's an automatic increase. It should be hard for us to increase our wages, and that's a tough decision, and it should be a tough decision, to spend other people's money for your wages. And the other thing is, we didn't just increase our wages. We went 130% or 140%, maybe more than doubled it. That's not fair to taxpayers. And the other side of that is that it's an automatic increase every year tied to a number from the HUD. Yes, that number's gone down twice, but that's during a recession. It's all likelihood it's going to go up. I don't see the reason for it. It's not a full-time job. I spend 25 to 30 hours a week on my job. I take it very serious. It's an exempt position, I look at it, is that, you know, some weeks you work 60 hours, and some weeks you work 10. But it all averages out. And again, it's just an honor to work for your county, you know, for your city residents, and I enjoy it.
So where is it standing now? They passed an amendment that would reduce the planned raises by 20%, but they're going to vote on it next month?
It has to have a second... It's an ordinance change, and so it's going to have a second reading. And last night was the second reading of the ordinance, and that's how it got changed. It kind of reminds me of a good sale, you know? You go and you hear that, "Geez, we're going to save 20%." And the city council says, you know, "Instead of costing this much, we're going to... Oh, we're going to reduce it by 20%." You don't look at it and how much raise they actually did get. And so it's kind of a shuffle game, in my opinion. I want to work for the people of my ward. I don't want to have to worry about my job. If you're... I think if you're dependent on that as your job, and that's your 40-hour-a-week, that's your job, you're going to be more thinking about, "How do I keep my job?" than you are, "How do I fight for my neighbors?"
Okay. All right. So you're still against it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, the next biggest issue facing Rochester is what? Transportation?
We need to figure out their transportation plan, and there's some council people trying to push it through, so we can get a small grant from the federal government. I can't say it's small. It's small cities or small grant, but it's half the cost of a rapid transit. We went to Indianapolis for a day to visit the newest rapid bus. I was always for the train before, but when I went to Indianapolis and looked at it, rapid bus will serve us well. It's just a matter of where we're going to put it, how we're going to do it. I am for cars being downtown. I'm not for eliminating cars. There are some on the council that are. I'm not against parking ramps being in downtown. I think that there's needed to be down there. You know, we have a lot of patients who come into the city. A lot of people from Illinois drive up here. Not everybody flies. And so transportation would probably be the biggest issue. The other big issue, I think, is going to sneak around the corner here is our sewer plan. And we have a study done, and it's going to be coming to us the next month. That will drive the growth of the city in the next 50 years. So we have transportation that will drive us for the next 50 to 100 years in our sewer plant plan. And where the lines go will drive where development takes place the next 50 years.
Wouldn't you say it's driving development because of requirements for new sewer pipe or replacement, or what?
Both. And it's kind of an interesting... People who are anti-development have figured out, "It's who owns the sewer." And if I'm going to expand my sewer line into a different area, that means you can have growth. If I don't expand it, then I can strangle growth. And there are some people who want to strangle growth in Rochester, and that's wrong.
Well, we have seen one school propose for where there aren't... It's not in the city, and they'll need roads and sidewalks and sewer and power and everything. Is that the kind of growth you're talking about?
That's one of them. And that's one area in the Bamber Valley. You know, if we ran a sewer line up Bamber Valley, and it's on top of that hill, and someone's going to pay for that line, it will be the school district that pays for that. And as you go down that hill, you have development take place. I would rather have that development take place in the city, because in the county, it's two- and three-acre lots. It's hard for us to expand. If you go outside the city limits, you see a lot of subdivisions for the county people. Two or three acres sewer plant or septic sewer. We can't get buses to them. We can't get bus... You know, school kids can't get there. It makes it tough for the city to grow. And the city has to grow.
What about the proposal of Oren Oko that talks about either getting together with Rochester or doing their own? What do you think about that?
Well, you know, Oren Oko's kind of a unique situation. And if you've followed it for 40 years, and I pretty much have followed it for 40 years, I think their best solution, our best solution, is that we run a sewer pipe to them, and we have a pump station that pumps it. Somebody in the city has told them that we wanted to take care of their zoning or do some restrictions on their growth. I'm not in favor of that. I think that they should, you know, if we're going to be their sewer plant, it's better for the environment, it's better for the state taxpayers, because the state bonding bill, they want to get bonding dollars. That comes from you and I. Let's use our state money wisely.
Okay. If you were to say anything about the Rochester growth at this point, knowing about DMC and what they're planning in terms of more employees, more jobs, and a more significant role for Mayo, what would you say? How would you grow our city if you had your druthers?
I think obviously it needs to be smart growth. It has to be a mixed use of different houses and hotels and condominiums. We have not had condos built in a long time. I think you're going to see some come online, some townhouses. We need some... A wide mix of housing, a good transportation system that I don't have to own a car. You know, if I take my car and I work at St. Mary's for 12 hours, and I take my car and I park it for 12 hours, basically it'd be 14. That's a $9,000 asset sitting in that parking lot that's not doing anything but maybe taking me to work in 15 minutes and 15 minutes home. That's $9,000 that can go a long ways to a family.
Yes. And a lot of the building that has taken place has been more expensive. It's been consolidating, trying to get people out of houses and into apartments, but it's not addressing the homeless problem, which is growing in our community like it is all over the country.
Well, I don't know if it's growing that much. I think that we're handling it in a little different way. Last year was kind of a surprise about the homeless. In talking to Olmsted County, and Olmsted County is basically the front person for that. They're a social service agency, and they knew of the 15 or 20 people who were out there and who didn't want to be housed. You know, it's a mental health issue for a lot of them. It's a choice for some, not many. It's not a good choice that you and I would make, but that's not for you and I to judge. But what happened to us in that recession is that we had 100 to 200 houses built in a year. We should have had 500 houses built. We have a backlog of about 5,000 houses or housing units. The world has changed. People coming to Mayo, some of them are research people coming from China, are here for two to three years, but they're not going to buy a house. The residents typically aren't buying houses anymore. So we need to be able to get all housing done, the high end, the middle, so everybody can move up or move where they need to be. The mayor's a good example. She lives in a four-bedroom house, her and her husband. They don't need that. But to move out and move into a condo or a townhouse that's more expensive doesn't make much sense.
Now, when you look at the new zoning ordinance that takes single-family zoning and says that they want to make it more dense in terms of housing, and that if people sell their single-family home, you can have as many as three families living on that lot, do you think that's a good idea?
Well, that was an issue that we handled early last year in the TOD and the RX2 zoning. And I've supported that. And I talked with my neighbors, and it affects Goose Egg Park a lot. And, you know, the thought process is that somebody's going to come in and buy two or three lots. You're talking $600,000 for three lots to build a three-story building. But our goal would be to densify that area so, A, you can walk to work, or B, you can take the bus. And I believe that that'll be better for us. And like Broadway, North Broadway, we had a huge issue on that with the assessments in how we're going to treat that area. We need to have a higher density to get more buses in that area.
But Broadway in downtown would be different than the single-family home zoning?
Yes, it would be. But that's a TOD section is along Broadway. And then if you go two blocks out, it's RX2, which is the single-family. So if you go around Goose Egg Park, you'll see single-family. But if you go by Dairy Queen and across from Dairy Queen, you'll see a lot of smaller businesses that... or houses. And there are some houses in there that will be bought out and made into apartments.
Okay. So you believe in the higher density and then the public transportation that serves it?
Yes, I think we need a good mix.
Okay. Is there enough money for all of this?
Well, we're lucky in Rochester that we're a growing city, and the property values are going up. When the property values go up, that helps out everybody. You're going to start seeing some of the benefits from some of these big buildings going up. It was just in the paper today that the Massey's building got sold. If I remember correctly, the county had it listed at $1.5 million for the Massey building, and somebody bought it for $9 million. So that's a heck of an increase in property values that we'll see an increase in two years.
What are the plans for it?
Well, they can't do hardly anything with that building, because it's an historic building.
So it's property?
It's property. It's a great location. I don't know, my grandma used to work at the Adams Bookstore. I don't know if you remember Adams Bookstore right next to Massey's. And I remember going to Massey's and Adams', and going into Woolworth's.
And then there's the Chateau Theater. And when they approved going ahead with this plan for Heart of the City, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, first of all, the Chateau Theater, it's never going to get torn down. I mean, it's a jewel for the whole city. But you're going to see the front yard, where the fountain is, it's going to be about a 30-foot hole for the next two years. They're going to dig up all the sewer, and they're going to remove the sewer from underneath the Galleria there, that was a sewer, the old road. They just kind of built over the sewer on that. So for two years, you're going to see that all ripped up. And when it gets done, it's going to be absolutely gorgeous. It's going to be a centerpiece for the city of Rochester.
In the meantime, if you're trying to drive downtown, forget it.
It makes it tough.
Yeah.
But I would rather live in a growing city than a dying city. And there are cities in Minnesota that used to be 125,000, 140,000, who are now 70,000. And that is not a situation that you want. Being stagnant is not good. You want to be growing.
Think of New York and California, and how many people are moving away each day. So it's nice to live in Rochester. And that's where we came to talk last time about an interim city, because right now, if you look at parking and bike lanes and everything, it's very difficult to get around. But if you can look beyond that, I mean, you just think of building a seven-story hotel on top of the Aganda Building, for example, and how that's going to do traffic around the clinic.
Well, you know, that's a temporary problem. I mean, that will be. And I'm going to work harder this year on keeping sidewalks open downtown. They've been easy to close them, because it doesn't cost to develop or anything. They need to protect those sidewalks, and we need to have good sidewalks and good protection in roads. I think some of them are closed, just so the construction workers can park. We need to have a little stricter on how fast those roads get reopened for everybody.
Okay. Now about the school. I know that's not either in the city's charter or the county's charter, but the school district. Where would you put that school?
Well, it's been an interesting conversation, and it's the same taxpayer. And so we work for the same people. We work for the taxpayers of Rochester. I've talked to some school people who think it should be in northwest Rochester. But the school district right now thinks it should be out in the Hart Farms area, and that's their proposal. And if they think that they can afford to put the sewer and the roads out there, I can't fight with them on that. I'm not in the school business, and I got to leave that up to them.
I know, I know. But you're talking about the growth of the city.
Yes.
And we all know schools are part of the growth plan. And where you put them drives where a lot of people are going to live. And, okay.
I went to John Adams the first year it was fully open, and it was all cornfields around us. And it was a cornfield and an athletic field there. You know, I was a building inspector for the city for 25 years, and the cornfields that we were building on were where people's homes are today. So we've grown, and we're going to continue to grow.
Okay. Here's a question that I haven't asked anybody yet, but how did the parking ramp that had... I call it the tunnel ramp, because it's easier, the parking lot number six or whatever it is. How did that get through the process of the approval of the council without knowing whether it would support the housing that's being talked about on the upper levels?
Well, there's two issues. And first, I will tell you what the company line is. The company line is that it's a safe parking lot, our parking ramp, and built to be safe, and it still remains safe. So your issue is our proposal to have 10 stories above it. And where did that go? We are right now doing an engineering study to see if it is possible to do that. There's some thought process that it's not. It will go into... Somehow we'll come up with either going to court or somehow solving that issue. There's two issues, though. And people forget that that ramp was seven months behind an opening. It was almost $300,000 over budget. We paid for some stuff that we should not have paid for, and we're looking into that also. So there's two big issues there, not just the addition on top of that. And I will... I won't say, you know, that the horse is out of the barn and shut the barn. I want to see who let the horse out of the barn and hold somebody accountable for what happened here, not just the system.
Good. Because that's what I was asking. It's just so they're now looking to see who's accountable.
Yes. But let's be clear, it's still a safe ramp.
Of course.
Yes.
It is for cars, right?
Yes, that's correct.
But what it is, they don't know that it would support the housing, because they want a lot of low-income housing up there.
Well, not low income, but workforce housing. And there's some terminology in there.
Yeah, I know.
And workforce housing are people who have jobs. I work with people at the clinic who are making $17 an hour who can't afford $1,100 for rent.
I know that.
And that's a lot of money. And these are hardworking people, and some of them need some help. And the state has a program for that, and the federal government does. So it's not just low income, but it's workforce housing.
And they talk about families, and that means school buses and transportation.
Yep.
Okay. We're down to our last three minutes.
Oh, good.
What would you like our... I feel so happy about that. What would you like our viewers to tell you about? And how would they communicate?
Well, the best way to get ahold of me is to send me an email. And I'm at palmerward5@gmail.com. Always call me a call, 507-254-9484. Always calling me a call, 507-254-9484. And I'm on the webpage. I also have a Facebook page. You know, some of the, one of the big things I want to make sure that the city does better in the next three years in my term is to have public engagement, get more public involvement. I was proud of Elton Hills Drive, how we brought that proposal up, we looked at that and how the people came. We had over 300 people come to Elton Hills School there and Hoover School and tell us what they thought about that. And it was an interesting process and I'm glad that we went through that. Same with Silver Lake or Soldier's Field Track. That was a hard issue to go through, but to watch the people come out and talk to it and watch the city change, I think the city administrator is big on listening to people and engaging people. And that's really what I would like us to do. I always, one of my big goals is when I call the city council or I call the city administrator or send them an email saying, hey, is there an issue? How do we fix it? I want the regular person to be able to do that. I want them to send a note to Public Works and say, hey, this road hasn't been cleared yet and it gets done. Not always is being done. And I want to make sure we get that done better.
I know the city has hired a public communications specialist.
Yes.
And so we're looking for more involvement of that individual's work with the public